Good morning, everyone. Thank you for being here this morning so we could start this year off with this new town council. Is that better?
Yeah.
All right. As we go through our agenda this morning, it's an exciting time of year. I'd like to thank everybody for being here, but let's start this meeting by standing and saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all. All right, so the first thing I'd like to do would be an introduction. First thing I'd like to do would be the introduction of our new council members, and that will be included in our roll call. So if we could call the roll.
Brian Blazak.
Present.
Paul Panzik.
Here.
Wayne Pondinos.
Present.
Michael Schilling.
Here.
Gerald Swatz.
Present.
Chief Wilman.
Here.
David Westlin.
Here.
Beth Hernandez, present.
Okay, so what I'd like to do at this point would be to do, go across the new council members just to do a brief introduction, if they could. We'll start and we'll go in alphabetical order. So, Mr. Blazak.
I'm glad to see you all. Thanks for supporting us and putting us in this position. We hope we can make you proud.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thanks for coming. Appreciate seeing the resident support out here. Appreciate your confidence in us last year getting us into this position, and we're hoping to do great things for you all. Thank you.
Wayne.
I'm a 28-year resident of St. John. I'm a 15-year employee for the Water Department. I'm a retired teamster. I'm a Christian. I attend faith church. I've been married 35 years, and I got two children, four grandchildren, and I took this job, decided to quit the one job and get into this because I like the people, I like the town, and I know a lot of you people out here have been in your house. You're great people. It's a great town, and we want to keep it that way. I thank you.
Mike.
I've been a lifelong resident of St. John. I grew up here since I was a kid. One reason I got in politics, there's a lot of things that I would like to see done. I've served probably almost two decades of public service through the town, the different departments. Ready to work for all my bosses. I can see you guys all out there.
All right, item four would be public comment. So before we get into that, I would just like to make a statement. You know, we've been elected to serve the town of St. John. And as new council members, we think we're going to try to do the best, the best that we can for what we think is right in this town. We may not always agree on all the details, but our goal is to respect each other and their opinions. And we also plan to respect the residents and their opportunity and their right to express their opinions as well. And so we will take some time to work through some of the details and some of the issues that we have before us. But one thing I can do and I can guarantee is that we will be working on it, and we're going to do what we think is best and can. So for public comment, I would like to ask that you address your statements to the chair. A request that you try to keep your comments to three minutes. That's in kind of respect to the rest of the audience here, so everybody has an opportunity to speak when they want to. But, you know, the other reason we put a limit on is because we don't want one person to monopolize everyone's time. If you need additional time, it could be granted to you, or we may ask you to address us after the meeting. We want to make sure that everyone has an opportunity to speak. We also ask that you respect those that are speaking, and if you are speaking, to respect those that you're speaking about. So with that, I will go to public comment.
No one has officially signed up.
Okay, is Mr. Dan Durnell here? Because he did ask to speak. Not here yet? Okay. Is there anyone who would like to? If you could, just raise your hand if you want to make a public comment, or come forward. And if you want, you can stand in line and make a public comment. Nobody? That's wonderful. I love that. But...
Wait till next one.
We do want you to know that your opinions, your concerns, and your ideas are important to us. I think it's important that we get wise advice and a wise counsel if we're going to make wise decisions. And there's people in this audience and people in this town that have that that we'd love to hear about. So keep that in mind as we go forward. I do see Mr. Dan Durnell here. If you would like to step forward and make a public comment. Mr. Dan Durnell is, for many of you, he is our council, our, sorry, our county councilman. He is also the chairman of the Republican Party for Lake County. Mr. Durnell.
Thank you, Mr. President. My name is Dan Durnell, and 990, I live at 9905 Prairie Avenue in Highland. And I apologize for being late. I was just at Highland at their ceremony, so I appreciate you giving me an opportunity to speak. I just, I'm here to congratulate you and thank, and I think this is a great board. The people have spoken, and I'm really excited to work with each and every one of you. As people at the county and at your level of government, our level of government, working together for the people is the best way for us to be successful. So, you know, starting with Brian. I've gotten to know you and Paul very, very well, and looking forward to working with you. Of course, Jerry, you come from my hometown, Highland, and looking forward to, again, working with you. And Mike and Wayne, it's a true pleasure getting to know you over the last several months. And you could always give me a call, even at 2:00 in the morning, Wayne. You could give me a call anytime you want. So, and of course, Beth, you know, we've gotten to know each other over the last five years. I look forward to working with you. And I see you have a new town attorney. Dave is a friend of mine, and I think he will do a great job in his firm. So again, thank you very much, and I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to speak. I didn't want to do any, I didn't want to speed, so I took my time and got here. So, thank you. I think there's some please here, so...
That's right. We want you to get a ticket on the way to our town council.
Exactly, exactly. But I will, again, I really look forward to work with every one of you, and congratulations again. I'm very proud of you guys.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
All right, next in our order of business, number five is the election of officers for the office of president. Do we have a nomination?
Yeah, I'd like to nominate Paul Panzik for president.
Okay. Are there any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Jerry Swatz.
Okay, any other nominations? If we could do a roll call vote for either Paul Panzik or Jerry Swatz.
Paul Panzik.
Brian Blazak.
Jerry Swatz.
Paul Panzik.
Jerry Swatz.
Wayne Pondinos.
Paul Panzik.
Michael Schilling.
Jerry Swatz.
And Jerry Swatz.
Jerry Swatz. Election, Jerry Swatz will be the president of the town council. Do we have a nomination for vice president?
I'd like to nominate Paul Panzik for vice president.
I'll second that.
Any other nominations? Can we have a, just an acclamation vote on that? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Say nay. Elected. Paul Panzik will be the vice president. All right, item number six, consideration to appoint the chief of police. In our quest to select the best officer to serve the residents in the town of St. John for a new chief of police, the members of this council felt very confident that we had some good quality candidates within our own department serving us. So we decided that we would take applications from within the department first. We interviewed three candidates, and after interviewing all three of those candidates, we were impressed by the skill, dedication, leadership capabilities, plans for growth, and also the ability to build one solid professional police department within the town of St. John. It's not surprising or by accident that we have one of the safest towns in Indiana based on the officers that we have serving our town. I'd like you, I'd like to ask you to hold your applause until we are completed with this, and I'll let you know when it's time. The man we have selected has been in a leadership position with the St. John Police Department and also the Lake Hills Volunteer Fire Department for 17 years. He's been a police officer for 18 years and is currently serving as our detective commander. I would like to congratulate the new chief of police for the St. John Metropolitan Police Department, Steve Flores. And we can applaud. I would, I would like to invite Steve and his family to come forward for the swearing-in ceremony. I'm sorry, before we do that, I do need a motion to approve this.
Motion to approve the appointment of Steve Flores as our police chief.
I second that.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 There are no opposed, so that is five to zero. Thank you. Now you may come forward for your swearing-in ceremony. Beth?
Yes. Okay, so quickly, I just want to say that I've had the pleasure of working with Chief Flores over the last four years in my capacity as court treasurer and his capacity as our detective commander. And I can confidently say that that Chief Flores will continue his excellent work for our town in his role as chief. He's fair, he's structured, and he has the best interests of the town and its residents at heart. And so it's my complete honor and privilege to swear in today as our new chief of police. You're welcome. Okay, you ready? All right, you'll raise your right hand. I, Stephen Flores...
I, Stephen Flores.
...do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
...that I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
...and the Constitution of the State of Indiana...
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
...and that I will faithfully...
And I will faithfully...
...and partially...
And partially...
...and diligently...
And diligently.
...discharge all my duties...
Discharge all my duties.
...as police chief...
As police chief.
...of the town of St. John...
Of the town of St. John.
...Lake County, Indiana...
Lake County, Indiana.
...according to law...
According to law.
...and to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
Okay? You are official.
If anybody would like to step up for a picture, you may.
You guys want to get a picture?
Sure.
One more. Cheese? Or should we say chief? You're welcome.
Hey, Happy New Year.
Good day.
Hey. Do a good job, guys.
Yeah, I'm going to get a picture of all of you guys together. Okay, Steve, you've got to get in the middle of your gang there.
Detective.
Okay, everybody. Needed to happen. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
There you go.
All right. All right, we move on to 6C. We're looking for a motion to consider the professional services agreement for our engineering services from Hassan Associates for the year 2020. Do I hear a motion? Support?
I'll second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay. Motion carries five to zero. Number 6D is we're looking for a motion to consider a professional services agreement for our legal services from Westlin and Bennett for the year 2020. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to consider Westlin and Bennett for legal services.
Second? Anyone?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Aye.
Passes four to one. Mr. Schilling, voting nay?
No.
No?
He was late.
He was late. He was late through the...
His eye was behind.
Motion. Motion passes five to zero. Sorry about that, Mike.
Sorry.
All right, 5E, consider the professional services agreement for legal services of Adam Decker for 2020. That will be for the Plan Commission Attorney. Do I hear a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Adam Decker as legal services for the Plan Commission of Board of Zoning Appeals in 2020.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Motion passes five to zero.
Mike was on time.
All right, 5F, consider professional services agreement for financial services from Baker Tilly for the year 2020. Do I have a motion?
A motion that we sign a service agreement for Baker Tilly for 2020.
Do I have support?
I'll second that.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay. Motion carries five to zero. And then we get to ordinance number 1699. This is an ordinance establishing a safety board. By establishing a safety board, what we are doing is we are taking the current police commission, and we're going to disband that, and we're doing a safety board which will cover our police and fire as well as our emergency services, and we'll oversee all of that. Any other details on this motion I need to cover? Mr. Russell, are we good on that?
No, that's, as part of the ordinance, it's vacating your current...
Okay, so do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the ordinance.
Ordinance 1699.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
You may ask for an amendment of that motion. We're looking to consider it on first reading.
Okay, so it wouldn't necessarily require an amendment, so what we're looking at, if you look at your agenda, we will be looking for a motion to consider ordinance 1699 on first reading.
That's what the...
You can do that, Mr. Schilling?
Thank you. That's the wording I was looking for.
Okay. Is there a second for that?
I'll second that.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Okay, so now we would like, I'm looking for a motion to adopt ordinance 1699 and authorize the town council president to execute. Is there a motion for that?
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 1699.
And authorize the town council...
Authorize the town to approve it.
Town council to execute it.
The town council to execute it.
Okay, do I have support for that?
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Motion passes five to zero. Okay, 5H, a resolution number 2020-01-01. It's a resolution initiating a proposal to change the zoning maps of certain real estate consisting of 111.62 acres and 40.33 acres. Mr. Panzik, if you would, give us the details on that.
Yes, this, I'm sorry, let me get my agenda back on top. Resolution number 2020-0101, a resolution initiating a proposal to change the zoning maps of certain real estate consisting of 111.62 acres and 40.33 acres within St. John. So what this motion is concerning is amending our zoning maps that are bundled into our zoning ordinance, and the 111 acres is regarding property that was annexed today in East Gates, and the 40 acres is property on the west side of town known as the ours-a-manian property. So, without reading the whole resolution, because it's a page and a half. So whereas the town of St. John, Lake County, Indiana is duly elected legislative body of the town empowered by applicable law with conducting the legislative business of the town, and whereas the town of St. John is previously annexed via ordinance taking effect January 1, 2020, certain real estate consisting of 111.62 acres legally described in Exhibit A and 40.33 acres legally described in Exhibit B with the alleged zoning classifications of R2-PUD and RC-2-PUD respectively by a vote of four in favor and one opposed. And whereas, Section 24-42 of Town of St. John Municipal Code provides that all land shall be annexed to the town with an R1 residential single-family zoning designation unless the town council unanimously assigns the annexed land to a different zoning district at the time of annexation. And whereas, the annexed property described above should be given an R1 residential single-family zoning classification pursuant to Section 24-42. And whereas, in the interest of clarity, the town council desires to clarify the zoning classification of the property annexed described above by initiating change in zone map of that property to R1 single-family residential pursuant to Indiana Code 36-7-4-602C. So now therefore be it resolved that the town council of the St. John, Lake County, Indiana, initiates a proposal to change zone map of the property described in Exhibit A from R2-PUD to R1 single-family residential, and the property described in Exhibit B from RC-2-PUD to R1 single-family residential, and incorporate the same into the zoning ordinance. And that the town council hereby directs the Plan Commission to prepare the proposal to change the zone maps consistent with the resolution instancer. And that the town council hereby directs Plan Commission to prepare, hold public meetings, and take all actions required by law with respect to proposal to change zone map for the property described in Exhibit A and Exhibit B.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve resolution number 2020-0101? And authorize the town council president to sign.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution 2020-01-01 and have the town council approve it. Is that correct, Jerry?
And have the town council president sign it.
Have the town council president sign it afterwards.
Thank you. Is there a second for that?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Passes five to zero. Okay, item 5I would be the 2020 board and commission appointments. I will start with probably the one that would be a little bit detailed the longest rather than go in alphabetical order. So I would like to...
Pull your mic down.
Okay. All right, so in approving our boards and commissions, I would like to start with the Public Safety Board that we just appointed. This was interesting that we worked through this because we had, I think, probably around 30, maybe even more applicants apply for this board.
Thirty-nine, actually.
Thank you.
That last count.
Okay. And we spent a lot of time interviewing. We tried to select the candidates that we thought would be the most qualified to come in for the interview process. We spent a lot of time on this, and what we ended up selecting was we selected two people that had previous experience in police work, two that had experience in fire, and then also one in private sector. We wanted to keep everything balanced out as much as possible. Two of the positions will have one-year appointments, two of them will have two-year appointments, and one of them will have a three-year appointment, so we can have staggered terms. So I would like to, if I could, start with the one-year appointments. First of all, this gentleman has 36 years as a firefighter and paramedic, including 20 years as a captain. I would like to ask Mr. Ray Paradiso if he would please rise. And the second, and please stay standing, sir. Also, I would like to highlight a law enforcement, gentleman has 35 years of law enforcement experience and retired as a sergeant, Patrick Moran. You guys will be serving one-year terms. For the two-year terms, in the private sector, we've got a gentleman who has 30 years of experience in experience in finance and in HR. Rob Kametz, if you are here, step forward if you would please to get away from the wall. Thank you. And then we also have someone with 19 years of fire experience, including up to deputy chief, and also a retired Army Command Sergeant Major. And believe it or not, this gentleman was awarded with the Legion of Merit, two Bronze Stars, a Purple Heart as well as others. Steve DeYoung, if you're here. No? Okay, Steve DeYoung will be another two-year appointment. And then finally, for the three-year appointment, this gentleman has 26 years of police work in different positions, including promotions up to captain. I would ask Richard Janowick if he would please rise. Way back in the corner. All right, thank you, sir. So these are the men that we've selected for our safety board. I would like at this time to have a motion to nominate and accept... I would like at this time to have a motion to nominate and accept these men as appointments on our safety board.
Make a motion that we nominate and accept these candidates as described by our chairman.
Is there a second for that?
I second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. That passes five to zero. Thank you, gentlemen, you may be seated. Just one comment I'd like to make. Through this interview process, through the chief of police and this interview process for the safety board, the quality of candidates and the experience we have in this town is phenomenal and I would just like to thank these people for stepping up and applying for that and that applies to the people for the other boards as well, but until I actually saw all of these applicants come in and read these resumes, I was just awfully impressed and I'd just like to thank you for putting your names forward. Okay, we move on. I would like to start with the contractors' board that takes five appointments, that's a two-year term. We are reappointing, I'm looking for a nomination to reappoint, John Gill, Steve Cozel and Richard Hoover, as well as new appointments of John Fambiani and Angela Stack. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint the individuals named by the council president for the contractors' board.
Is there a support for that?
I'll second that.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. That passes, passes five to zero. Next, I would like to look at the Board of Zoning Appeals. There are two openings for that, one of them is a town council appointment, no, I'm sorry, I'm gonna hold off on that one. Let's go to the plan commission. For the plan commission, we have, yes, for the plan commission, the first step we need to do is accept the resignation of Paul Panzik because you can't serve on the plan commission and also as on one of our commissions, so as the chairman, I will accept his resignation.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, so I would like to clarify that statement and this is for the benefit of the public, so actually I could serve on the plan commission as well as the town council, however, this town council has decided that we're not gonna rack all the boards up with town council people, we want more residents involved, so I'm stepping down for that reason.
Thank you, thank you for that clarification. So on the town council, has to appoint members to this commission, first of all would be three town employees and there's also a requirement that the other four positions have to be in balance to a certain degree with Republicans and Democrats, we're not allowed to have more than two of any party on this commission. So for the town employees, we are appointing John Gill, Donna Little, Aaron Ampmeyer and then for the other four positions, for the Republican position, we are reappointing Bob Burleson to handle the balance of his term. Bob had resigned and was able to come back, so Bob's term will expire in twenty twenty-one. I'm sorry, the town council employees, town council, the town employees will be serving to one-year terms, so Bob Burleson has, has balance of his term till December thirty-one, twenty twenty-one. We are also appointing John Kennedy to this term, he was, he's coming off the board, so his term will expire in twenty twenty-four. We also have another new appointment for Nancy Vicenec-Woland, will serve a four-year term and expire in twenty twenty-four. And then finally, we have Paul Panzik's replacement which will be Yolanda Cardona, she, her term will expire on twelve thirty-one of twenty twenty-one. So those will be the seven members of our plan commission. Do I have a motion from the, from the board?
Motion to accept and nominate the appointees as outlined by our council president.
Support anywhere?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That passes five to zero. Okay, that will allow us then to move over to the, the BZA. The Board of Zoning Appeals has five members on that board, three of them serve as normal appointments and are appointed for four-year terms, but there are two positions on that board and, and those spots are already filled. There are two positions on the board, one of which requires the town council appointment from the plan commission, the other one will require a plan commission appointment from the plan commission. So I'm looking for a nomination to nominate John Kennedy to serve as the town council appointment from the plan commission to the BZA. Do I have a motion for that?
I nominate we select John Kennedy as the town council appointee from the plan commission to the BZA.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. That passes five to zero. I would like to go to the Impact Advisory Committee. We have five positions that are open there, they are all one-year appointments. Two of the members from the past have expressed interest in coming back, so we would like to reappoint to this commission Tom Cummings and Vince Fresioni and then add to this committee Dennis DeVito, Doug Blocker and John Dietzer. Do I have a motion to nominate these five men to serve on the Impact Advisory Committee?
I'll make a motion to have those five guys serve on the Impact Advisory Committee.
I'll second it.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Those five are passed, five to zero. And then we also will appoint those, I'm looking for a motion to appoint those same five members to the Impact Fee Review Committee, that will also be a one-year appointment. Do I have a motion to appoint those five to the Impact Fee Review Committee?
I'll make a motion to appoint those five to the Impact Review Committee.
Is there support for that?
I'll second that.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. That passes five to zero. The next one would be the park board. We currently have two positions that are open on the park board. One of them, Frank Bradkey is our park board chairman and he asked to reapply to that board, so we will reappoint him and the new member that we will appoint to the park board will be Mike Moffett. Do I have a motion to appoint those two gentlemen to the park board?
I make a motion to have those two gentlemen, Mr. Moffett, Mr. Bradkey, be assigned to the park board.
Is there support for that?
I'll second that.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. That passes five to zero. The redevelopment commission, those are one-year appointments and that will be filled by the five men that are currently on your town council and then there is also a appointment from Lake Central School which is Cindy Seuss and an appointment from Hanover School Corporation, James Sacalaris and so I would like a motion to appoint those people to the redevelopment commission, all seven of us.
I'll make a motion to appoint the seven individuals named by the council president to serve on the board.
Redevelopment Commission.
Commission.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. That passes five to zero. And then for the waterworks board, we have three openings there, they are all one-year appointments. We had one member, Ken Gambala, asked to be reappointed, so we are appointing him to the waterworks board and then to, also to the waterworks board, we will add Bill Manasopoulos and Dr. Jack Chavez. Do I have a motion to appoint these three men to the waterworks board?
I make a motion to appoint Mr. Gambala, Mr. Chavez and the other guy to the waterworks board. I didn't write it down quick enough.
Manasopoulos.
I love it.
Yeah, I guess it's a hard one to spell.
Is there support for that?
Thank you, Wayne, I'll, I'll support Wayne and second that motion.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That passes five to zero. All right. If we could, rather than go this through one at a time, I would last ask all those that are gonna, that have been appointed to boards and serving on boards with the exception of our, of our safety board, if you could please rise or step forward, please. I know some of you are here and you agreed to come out today. Anyone else? Thank you all very much. All right, liaison appointments, and I do not have that sheet of paper with me.
We'll pass it around currently.
Okay. Do you have that, Beth, or?
Why don't you explain?
I have it right now.
Why don't you explain the liaison positions, Jerry?
Okay. All right, so we have liaisons and those actually will be town council members that have been assigned to meet with these boards and commissions to serve in an advisory capacity. They will have speaking rights, but they will not have any voting rights at these commission meetings. They will report back to the town council for recommendations and make sure that the town council knows what's going on in these boards and commissions and making sure that these boards and commissions have an idea of the desires of the town council. That way, I think the desires of the town residents will be served the best there. So with that in mind, we've got this worked out, I just don't have it in all my notes.
Do you want me to?
If you have it, yes, please, thank you.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but this is what I had in our notes. Michael Schilling would be the safety board liaison. Jerry Swets would be Lake County Solid Waste District and NERC. Paul Panzik, Plan Commission, Board of Zoning and Board of Zoning Appeals. Brian Blazak is Safety Village and you were Chamber of Commerce, correct, Brian?
I can take it, sure.
Okay. Wayne Pondinos is going to be the liaison for the Public Works and were you park board, Wayne?
Yes.
And then Mike Schilling would, as safety board, would be the liaison for both the fire and the police department as well.
Does that sound right, guys?
Yes, it does.
All right, I'm glad you guys are covering me. Do I have a motion to accept those appointments or appoint, make those appointments?
Motion to accept the liaison appointments as before mentioned.
Is there support?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. That passes five to zero. All right, and now we are up to point number seven would be reports and correspondence, town council, the clerk and the staff. And I guess as the newly elected president, I get to start, so I just would like to thank all of you for coming out here today to support us. This is the first meeting of many that we're going to try to make good strides to improve and continue to work on this town, the development and the building in this town, we've got a lot of people that have stepped forward to help and so we're thankful for that as well. One other thing we're doing today is that we are officially dissolving the utility board. Utility board was never properly established back in two thousand and eleven and this affects the salary of the town council. It's based on the current salary, in the current salary ordinance, a town councilman is paid twenty-two thousand, twenty-six dollars and sixty-six cents. Of that, sixteen thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars and twenty-eight cents comes from the general fund, but we also get paid five thousand, seven hundred and ninety-six dollars and thirty-eight cents from the wastewater utility. Utility board was established in twenty eleven but not necessarily established correctly, but after a downturn in the economy from two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine going back, the town council did not provide raises, so in two thousand and eleven, they kind of modified the sanitary board compensation, they established the utility board and they added raises in. So as we tried to figure out the best way to handle this in an effort to be as transparent as possible, we're going to modify the salary ordinance to reflect the actual salary paid to the council members, it will remain at twenty-two thousand, twenty-six dollars and sixty-six cents, but we will make that modification at a later town council meeting and this was a lot of discussion on our part, we really wanted to be as transparent as possible to the residents of this town so they know exactly what the town council is being paid and, and instead of trying to look in different areas, so as, as a board, that's really the direction we plan to go. So that's all I have. If we go and order the town council, Mr. Blazak, do you have anything to add?
No, I'm pleased with today.
Mr. Panzik.
I do have a statement, thank you. Again, thank you all for, for coming today, I appreciate it, so I just would like to summarize some of what's been accomplished in the first hour and, and how much more we have to accomplish. So we've established a safety board with equal and unbiased representation for fire and police, we've appointed residents to the boards and commissions and not council members, we've dissolved the utility board, bringing transparency to town council salary, established a new direction for the police department, obtained new legal representation dividing duties for town matters and planning and development to help prepare for new initiatives to update and revise our ordinance and by that I mean, we appointed Adam Decker for BZA and Plan Commission, David Westlin is gonna have his hands full just with council issues and Adam will bring his expertise and skill to, to enable us to update our ordinances as residents are desiring. Adam, introduce yourself, Mr. Adam Decker, he's gonna be our...
Thank you, Paul. My name is Adam Decker, I have an office in Crown Point, I'm married to my wife Becky who's a schoolteacher in the Crown Point Community School System, I have three boys and I'm really looking forward to working with the Plan Commission and Board of Zoning Appeals this year.
Thank you. Beyond that, we have a new method of outreach to residents, opening town hall early today for mingling as well as live stream, hopefully it's working out there, first time ever.
Smile.
Smile, everyone. We've, something that some may or may not be aware of, but we've already completely developed or written and developed and published a job description and posting to expedite hiring of new town manager, it's already online and available for viewing, if you just Google GOV-HR, you will find our town manager, job description and parameters and where they're taking applications for that job with a closing date of January twentieth, so we are moving quickly on getting qualified talent into that position. We will be meeting in a week to follow through on the Community Crossing Grant and accept bids with intent and it is our mission to have that work completed, billed out and paid so that we can apply again in August for the Community Crossing Grant. We will not miss any more application dates because of...
Poor planning.
Poor planning on, on contracts. We are in process of adding a position to our park department. Currently, we have one park employee, that's gonna change, so we are working on that currently. We have taken the action to initiate proper zoning on the annexed land and something a little bit further out on our radar, but you're gonna see more of this as better planning in our town, so we have the director of NERC, which is the Northwest Indiana Regional Planning, is going to come and meet the town council in mid-March, on March eleventh, and talk about how NERC can help us accomplish some of our goals with, with roads and, and improvements for our thoroughfares and, and that will be an open meeting for everyone to attend, it'll be a town council study session, so, and thank you for this, for letting me go beyond three minutes here. My closing statement, speaking is only one of five elected members, I appreciate the support of our residents in bringing forth the aforementioned improvements, it is only January first and we have much more work ahead, many good ideas to explore and improvements to bring forth for St. John. I ask for your continued support as we move forward and build upon this good start in a positive direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you, Paul. Wayne Pandinos.
Yeah, I'd like to talk about, if you can hear me, the Human Resource Department. I wanna see a Human Resource Department brought to the town, where anybody in Public Works, the Park Department, please, fire. They can come and voice their opinions without getting retaliated against. I'd like to have a grant writer come in and somehow help the town. There's police grants, there's fire grants that we can get into. I think that would be great. And I'd like to go back to the Police Department investigation that was supposedly done. I don't think that was properly done. I think there's a way to bring out the truth and what happened. I'd like to go back to that. And then I'd like to bring up Steve Kill. That might be a bad word for some people, but I think, I get choked up, I think that he did a good job, and he got a bad rap. Was he perfect? No. But nobody in this room is perfect. So I think that it was mishandled. Nobody said, hey, you need to move on. He did it on his own. It was all hinted out, and you gotta have respect. You people come here for respect from us, it wasn't respectful at all. I'm kind of ashamed the way it happened, but, you know, Steve's a better man. He come forward, he's giving us information, telling us what to do. He could tell you guys, hey, hit the road, and I don't like that. And then another thing, when we're doing our interviews, everybody on this board, from what I know, got an email or phone calls, how we should not hire somebody or not appoint somebody. I think that's wrong. There's a lot of hate in this world, and it shouldn't be in this, in this room, and it shouldn't be on this board. So some person didn't get, he was probably qualified, but he got blackballed. That's wrong, and that needs to stop. If you don't like something or somebody, that's fine, but we all need to agree on things or disagree and walk away. And that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Wayne. Mike Schilling.
Looking forward to working with you. Along with Wayne, I'd like to thank Steve Kill for his years of service to this town. Also, his years of service in Sherrville. The tri-town area is a better place with him being active in both of the towns, and I have no other comments.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Clerk Treasurer Beth Hernandez.
Um, I, well, first, IT Department sent a message, and they said it is live streaming. We had 52 viewers just a few minutes ago. So we are up and running. I would like to thank the residents for entrusting me with another four years as your Clerk Treasurer. We started a lot of good work four years ago during my first term, and we certainly plan to continue that good work. I am excited to work with this incoming Council. So far, during our transition period, we've had, we've had the ability to have numerous meetings and planning sessions and open dialogue, and that's definitely something that I'm looking forward to as we move into this next four years. It's definitely going to be helpful for the services that we're able to provide for you, and so I'm appreciative that, you know, we're able to work together, and the decisions that have been made have been wonderful, in my opinion, of course. But again, thank you to the residents. As a side note, or an order of, an order of business, our Public Works Department, so I'm just going to look for you guys to maybe make a motion for approval, they had to do kind of an emergency hydrant and valve replacement, and this was kind of at the end of December. And so I need approval, even though it was from 2019, for the expense of $5,175. That was for two hydrants, one valve, and a delivery charge to go ahead and take care of that business for our Public Works Department. So I'm just looking if the Council would please make a motion for the approval of that $5,175 invoice.
Do I have a motion for that?
I'll make a motion for the payment of the bill for $5,175 for emergency fire hydrant replacement.
Is there support?
I'll second it.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That passes five to zero. Beth?
And to Chief Flores, I'm definitely, our office is definitely looking forward to working with you and the Police Department, along with all other departments here within town, our Parks Department. Chief Wilman's always been, been great to work with, and so we're looking forward to moving, moving forward here in 2020. So, thank you.
Okay. As we look towards the staff, Margaret Abernathy, working in Steve Kill's office and has done a lot of work for us on the minutes and things like that. Do you have any comments, anything to bring to the Board today?
Congratulations, and I look forward to working with all of you.
We appreciate your work. Thank you.
Thank you.
You've done a splendid job.
Mr. David Westlin, our new Town Attorney. Any comments?
Excuse me, I just wanna say thanks for the opportunity. I think St. John is a, as I told you guys when we talked before, I think you guys have a real opportunity to do some really neat things in this town. It's a growing town. It's a jewel of not only Northwest Indiana, but I think the state, as you pointed out. It's one of the safest communities, and I think there are some really exciting things going on in St. John, and I just look forward to the opportunity and want to say thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Adam Decker, any other thing else to resp...
No, Mr. President, but thank you for the opportunity.
Okay, and we look to Chief Wilman from the Fire Department.
I'd like to wish everyone in the room a very Happy New Year. I didn't bring a report on. I know you're really working hard. However, it's really thrilling to be able to know now that I'm gonna be working side by side with these people, and we share the same duties, and then we share different responsibilities, but we also share a hallway and two offices there. I think it's gonna be wonderful. Thank you.
And then let me call on Chief Flores.
First of all, I'd just like to thank the elected officials for giving me this opportunity. It's an honor, truly is an honor, to serve the town of St. John and the people here that are, that are here today. It's exciting, and thank you for believing in me, and I won't disappoint you guys, I promise. We'll work hard together. Teamwork's the best policy, as long as we work together and work together with the town and the people in this town. It's a great place to be, a great place to work, and a great place to call home, and I want to continue that. Finally, I'd like to thank all the residents that came out today, my family, my mom and dad, my wife, my daughter. My family came out in force today, so they're probably... And so thank you guys for being here today. You know, anytime anybody needs anything, please, please reach out to me. And last, this, we've gone through, through some tough times at the Police Department, and all those gentlemen back there know what I'm talking about. This, this position, my title, is not about me, it's about them and the people out here. So working with you guys, I'm gonna rely on every single one of you and the residents of this town. So thank you again for the opportunity, and I look forward to working with you all.
Okay, and before I ask for a motion to adjourn, since this is our first meeting, we're gonna give redos an opportunity to see if any of the Councilmen have anything else they would like to add. Brian, anything else?
I think we all pretty well covered it. Thanks for being here.
Mr. Panzik.
Yes, I do wanna make a comment, and Wayne, thanks for bringing that up. I don't have a problem with you bringing that up about the, the contact that was made, but I would like to make this statement just to clear my family name. Not only did I receive an email, but I have also been approached by countless residents over the months, and I refuse to let any outside influences or political influences ever affect any of my decisions as a Councilman. I'm not in it for those reasons at all. I'm not looking to advance or go anywhere. So rest assured, any appointments that were made were done in a completely unbiased way. In fact, I get defensive when somebody comes out and says, well, you should do this, or you shouldn't do that. No way, we're gonna do what's right. We're gonna do what's right. And, and so everything I did, in my heart, I know I followed it like by the line. Nobody's gonna get one by me. So just, I just wanna make that known, that if anything, I was defensive, but I let the process carry out and do it that way. But so, and I'd like to think that, I'd like, I'm just one of five. I'd like to think we're all in it for the right reasons, but thank you.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Mr. Pandinos.
I just wanna thank everybody for coming. It's great to have a full house, and it was a nice meeting. It was respectful, and thank you.
Okay.
You guys have a good New Year.
Mr. Schilling.
Thank you for coming out. That's all I got.
All right, I would like to, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. You guys don't wanna leave?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Any, any comments? Comments?
No.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Five to zero.